This is the Selectmen's Meeting for June 24th, 2010. First order of business, salute to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda.
I make the motion to approve the agenda with one amendment, and that's the date is June 24th instead of June 17th.
Put the long date on there, didn't change the date. All right, 24.
I'll second that, all in favor. Approval of the minutes of last meeting.
I make the motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting as written.
Second it, all in favor. Signing of Lawrence. Okay, there is no old business. Under new business, we have the acceptance of Robin Ham's proposal for mowing the town hall, public safety building, Mary Grant Nature Preserve, Lincoln School. It's $3,500, which is actually less than last year. And it's under $4,000, so we don't have to go out to bed, so I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion to accept Robin Ham's proposal for mowing.
I'll second that. All in favor, done. That goes from...
September 30th.
September, May to September.
May to September, okay. Okay, we have Ken Paul coming up.
The issue I have before you guys tonight is about three years ago, I had a gentleman call to do an apartment in an existing barn. At that time, there were no growth permits available, so that was the end of the conversation. Three years later, the owner goes to sell the property, and the realtor, in reviewing it, what they had on the property count assessment, noticed that it was a single family. When I talked to the gentleman three years ago, he continued on with the project without any permits. The owner, if you're looking at the package I gave you guys, page one's the application, two is the photo of the house with the barn that's existing, and they did the apartment inside the existing barn, which is really a second dwelling unit. Page three is the proposal. On page four, item number one, the contractor charged her right there for permits and inspections. She was on the assumption that all permits and inspections were paid.
Were any paid at all?
Not at that time, no.
No, no.
No, that was the end of the conversation at that time. Five is the signed copy of the contract with the contractor and the owner. Six is the map, and seven is our fee schedule. The issue is, it turns an $841 permit into $3,364 with a penalty clause we have in the fee schedule, which is four times for work started without permits. The owner was under the impression that permits were paid. Although she is ultimately responsible, she should have saw the orange building permit placid in the window, maybe saw inspections coming and going. We've dealt with the plumbing so far. The place is totally done, 100% at one time. Now we've got it, and we've removed the kitchen, they've removed the ceilings now. The plumbing was video scoped with a camera from back up through, because it's all below the concrete, we can't see any of that. So we're working with the state inspectors on that also. The issue tonight with you guys is the fee. The applicant and her representative is also here, if you have any questions for them. Looking at the fees, there may be a possibility that some, which are highlighted in the purple pinkish color, you may consider reducing, such as the mapping, which is normally $35, which would roll into $140 with the times four. The septic that wasn't installed, that's a $138 permit into $555. The conditional use permit wasn't required at that time, but it is now. A conditional use permit would be required for the two family. That's a $100 permit, which turns into $400. So those may be areas you guys could consider. Another thing maybe you could consider is if you were assessing the whole fee, that possibly at the end of, once we've done our inspections, possibly reimbursing some. Right now, just at the beginning of it, I've probably been out 10 times to the project, and we haven't even got the permits issued yet, so it's gonna be much more considerable long time than a normal process would be.
Is it the same contractor now as it was?
Yes, he is, he just sent me an email tonight that he is gonna make everything better. I don't know if that means financially, that's not my issue, but he is responsive, and he is the one taking it all apart so far.
Well, shouldn't the contractor be responsible for paying these fees?
The issues just keep rolling on and on and on. The house was, is under contract, they were in the jeopardy of losing the first time a homeowner package, the $8,000 credit. I believe the owner herself is having all she can do to keep the house, isn't it? So as this goes on and on, finally, there'll be just one straw that breaks the camel's back. Whether it is the fees that the contractor doesn't have the money to come up with, but he has the time to do the labor, I don't, I don't know. The applicant could probably answer to that. If, when we first started working with the realtor on this, this had Superior Court written all over it. If the contractor walked away, the applicant would probably need $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 to finish, bring it all back up, which at the same time, maybe just rip it all out and lose the $50,000 they, they did the project with.
How do you feel? You are satisfied with what process has been happening so far to try to rectify?
As far as the owner and her agent, they've been 100%, really good. They brought it to our attention to show, oh my God, what are we gonna do from here? The builder, he's been less than truthful on a couple of occasions, but today's correspondence that he sent me, that he's willing to do whatever he has to do to make it right. Again, I don't know if that means financially paying for things, or, I think the main thing that the sellers and the buyers are trying to do is have a closing here, so.
Well, you know, our job and your job is to be in the best interest of the town of Acton.
Yep.
Now, we have our laws and ordinances in place to be, you know, abided by, but it seems here that the contractor was not really honest in this case. And I don't want to see anybody lose their home, and I don't want to see anybody, you know, and lose a sale, because that way, the property will not be foreclosed, I'm looking to continue the taxes coming in, so that's in the benefit of the town.
Correct.
So, I mean, I personally think that the contractor should pay this, but I'm willing to talk about reducing it a little bit, reducing it, you know, to help her out.
I don't see in the agreement, Kenny, where the contractor was gonna be responsible for the permits.
Number one, item number one, it was $400 on page four, $400 for permits. At the time, somebody that knows a little bit about construction may realize that that $400 is too cheap. A growth permit is $300 itself, but again, at that time, a growth permit wasn't even required.
So this piece here was part of the proposal?
Correct.
Okay.
With the total at the bottom of $50,590?
And those fees were paid in full to the contractor?
Yeah, oh yeah. Yeah, that was three years ago. He was sleeping good like he's forgotten all about it. And I believe from conversation with the seller's agent, that they asked him point-blank, "Do you have the permits?", and he said, "Yes, I do." Everything's all set. The next question would have been, "I need a copy of those", or something like that, but somebody that's not in the business is very easily misled.
Will it be, with the approach that you're taking now, will the whole thing be rectified by you, and in how much time, as far as up to your standards that it should be?
Yeah, it's all gonna go by the builder's schedule, as far as, the whole ceilings are coming apart, some of the floors coming up, a lot of the walls are coming apart, we're going up above through the attic, too. It's unique, because the main structure was already there, but we've gotta look at the issues that I can see that are exposed, and then what we need to unexpose to see some of the other stuff. Once, I haven't been out since all the ceilings have been removed, isn't it? But that'll be the next step.
What's your thoughts, Kenny, if, I'm not really clear, I guess, on how much they plan on taking back out?
As far as the building itself, inside?
Yes, I mean, they plan on taking the plumbing back out, and the electrical back out?
The potential would be, all the drywall would be removed, all the insulation be removed, all the flooring would be removed, that is worst-case scenario. The plumbing is below concrete, so we used a video camera and scoped through all the plumbing to take a look at it, the directional fittings and stuff like that, make sure that was correct, so we're able to see most of the plumbing through the cameras. We went in 23 feet with the cameras to scope that, and then we did an air test on it, so it does meet the air test, and the state plumbing inspector is also there with us up for that.
How about the electrical?
Electrical, we're gonna have to see once the ceilings are all removed and the insulation, where they come down vertically. As long as it's all opened up, it's probably not going to have to come out unless there's other structural issues, and the structure needs to be changed, and then the electrical can go back in.
I guess my question would be, three years from now, and somebody wanted to do the same thing again, that the electrical and the plumbing would still be in place? So there'll be a cost, that they would, the owners and the owners wouldn't have to incur?
As far as three years from now, they want to put an apartment in the barn? I think the intent is, next week, the apartment goes back in the barn. We've done enough inspections that we can, enough has come apart, we've done the inspections, and they can start putting back in. The current buyer wants the second dwelling unit. They've been through the planning board and has been granted a conditional use permit a couple of weeks ago, so the planning board is all set with that, and it meets all the zoning requirements.
So they're not tearing the apartment out? They're just, they're just tearing it out enough for inspection, and then they're putting it back?
It's probably gonna be, the whole thing's gonna come out, we'll do the inspections, and then they'll put the drywall and the insulation back in, and do the reframing as needed.
I would say, my thought is, since it was not, I mean, I think that the owner has the responsibility in making sure this is done, but it seems like the contractor took advantage. So my, my thing is to bring it down to $1,500 bucks and leave it at that, to be fair to the owner. I think the contractor should pay it, but that's between them.
To keep the math easy, can we go to just doubling the fee, which would be $1682.40?
Sure.
$1682.40.
$1682.40, so it cuts it in half, doubles it.
Times two.
That's what my, my recommendation would be.
I would say the same, but I don't know if the owners would like to speak on this.
Do you guys wanna say anything? Do you guys need to, want to say anything?
Does that sound fair to you?
Okay, I'll make that motion for that, $1682.40.
$1682.40, okay, I'll second that, all in favor, done. Good luck, thank you, good evening. Thanks, Kenny.
Kenny, you want this back?
You need to keep them, or?
No.
No, no, you can keep the highlights, Mark.
Okay, now we have an opening of the reevaluation bids. These are bids here?
These are the bids.
Dennis, you have to read all these.
No, I'll get those, just total.
Dennis, why don't you?
Open them.
Now, this one is for O'Donnell.
O'Donnell, is that the guy that came in Friday?
Yep.
Remember, he talked to us, he's gonna give us two different?
Right, so there should be two bids there.
Two bids, yeah, Tony. Of course, a bid at each side.
Okay.
Yeah, while he's doing that, open another one.
This first one is John E. O'Donnell Associates. These are all assessing, assessing firms, and we actually met with Mr. O'Donnell on Friday for quite a while, and we have two different bids that are going to be, one using his program and one not using his program, and I believe they're both the same.
Yeah.
Well, there's two, they're both the same, and both, this must be two copies. Okay, if we use his program, it'll be $212,500. $212,500.
$212,500.
And if we choose to retain the Trio Assessment Software, it's $242,750. Okay, so there's two different ones, which we actually asked him to do.
This one here? KRT Appraisal.
Okay.
Okay, full townwide. Now, this is KRT Appraisal. By the way, O'Donnell. Where are they, I wanted to see where they were from, I forgot.
Sebagalay?
Yeah, they're up in the, they're up north. Where's their address here? Mention it for the record. What does it say?
I thought they said they're from Sebagalay.
They're a main program, they're a main company, they're way...
They're a main company.
Raymond.
Raymond.
Raymond, Maine.
Raymond, that was it.
They're from Raymond, Maine, okay. This company is KRT Appraisal, which is from Haverhill, Massachusetts, and they are coming in at $190,000 for a full-townwide reevaluation, using the current Trio system.
Is that the other gentleman that was in the other day?
No.
No.
So where's that from? That's Robbins?
I don't know, why don't you do this one first?
All right. Who's that?
William Van...
Okay, that's the one that was on the other day.
William Van Tunan, which is from Madison. He was the one that came with us?
He's the one that was on the other day.
He was the one that was in also. He's from Madison, Maine, which is way up, and his bid is $220,000. This must be from a smaller company. Thank you very much.
I didn't open it all the way. I took it out of the other package.
This is Jackie Robbins, Certified Maine Assessor, from Monroe, Maine, and it is $265,500.
Yep, J.F. Ryan. Boy, this one here, they really feel that. They wanted to feel. I didn't peek at this one.
They're gonna be pumped, sealed it, isn't it?
I didn't peek at this one. Fingers shoving in there. Tracy, something, I mean, I can't read it.
That's Vision.
Huh?
Vision.
Says Tracy, Vision Appraisal, yeah.
Yep.
This one is J.F. Ryan Associates Property Appraisal and Consulting. Doesn't say where they're from, yet. They're in at $257,000.
$257,000.
$257,000. Okay, they're from Newbury, Massachusetts, Newbury. Okay, this one's Vision Appraisal. Where'd they find it?
North Borough, Mass.
North Borough, Mass, they're... It looks like this, but I don't know. Looks like $158,000, but it's just so much here.
That is a total.
That's a total. All right, $158,000. Now, this, they want us to, the other thing about it is, a lot of these companies want us to use their own, their software.
Use their, their software.
And Vision Appraisal is, is one of them.
You need to find out how much you've gone to cost to call that software.
Right, the total thing.
Is this where this goes? That's all of them?
Yeah.
That's it.
All right, now what I think we should do is, Joe Lasad should look over all these, because they need to be studied, and I'd like to have his, his opinion. So if, Linda, you could get this off to him in a big box and have him look at them. Okay, because he's the one that's gonna be working with these people.
Hopefully tomorrow morning.
You know, and we'll go from there. All right, you got them all? How many altogether?
What's that?
How many altogether?
Five, was it? One, two, three, four, five, six.
Six. Okay, that's pretty good.
That's a good response, so...
Yeah, so we'll wait for Joe Lasad to give us his opinion. Okay, number four will be to sign the contract actually with Joe Lasad, which is company which is municipal resources, which is from Meredith, Meredith, New Hampshire. And this is a, it's a two-year agreement, right?
Two-year agreement.
Two-year agreement for him to be our assessing consultant and assessing work. Basically, this is just at a $75 hourly rate, and with a couple of different differentials in there. And we usually budget so much in the, in the account to use these services.
Yeah, and he is the overseen.
And he's overseeing this.
Liaison between the...
Right.
...reval and the selectmen.
Right.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we sign the agreement with Joe Lasad.
I'll second that. All in favor, done. 624. That's two of them. There's another one, too. Okay. Then we'll just initial it.
And I assume it would send this at the same time, back to Joe with coffee?
With a tip of coffee and something, back to Joe.
Okay, next, we have a bunch of appointments and reappointments, so I'm gonna read them all off, and then we'll act on them all at once. Okay, these are all different types of things. This is Florence Serra for Ballot Clerk. We have William Catanisi for Emergency Management Agency Deputy Director. Ed Walsh, the Emergency Management Agency Director. Frank Shippey as the Animal Control Officer. Kenneth Paul as the Code Enforcement Officer and Local Plumbing Inspector. Steve McDonough, the Deputy Code Enforcement Officer and Local Plumbing Inspector. William Catanisi as the E-911 Addressing Officer. Lorraine Yetton as the Representative to the Southern Maine Regional Planning Commission. Tom Cashin as the Representative to the Southern Maine Regional Planning Commission. William Maloney, the Conservation Committee Member. Hannah Phillips, Conservation Committee Member. Tom Cashin, Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee Member. John Moore, Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee Member. Robert Meyer, Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee Member. Roy Trafton, Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee Member. Greg Martin, Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee Member. Elise Miller, Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee Member. Carl Davis, Mary Grant Nature Preserve Committee Member. Eric Gallagher, Mary Grant Nature Preserve Committee Member. Richard Johnson, Mary Grant Nature Preserve Committee Member. Barbara Seega, Mary Grant Nature Preserve Committee Member. Jim Wilson, Mary Grant Nature Preserve Committee Member. And Susan Meehan, Mary Grant Nature Preserve Committee Member.
I make a motion to approve all appointments, as read.
Yes, Mr. Moore.
Elise Miller was resigned from that committee and was replaced by Greg, I don't know his last name, maybe Tom.
Greg Azariah. We don't have a resident, didn't have a resignation from Elise.
As far as I know, she...
Greg is in the staff. He read his name.
Okay, and she's gotta give a letter for it to be official, so...
Okay, okay.
Anyway, I made a motion to accept all the appointments, as read.
Okay, I'll second that, all in favor. Now we gotta sign them all.
For those of you who are read as an appointment tonight, you'll still need to go into, get one in with the town clerk.
That's it? Want to keep this?
Yeah, why don't you put them on there? We'll keep them separate. They gotta go to Jennifer. Jennifer's writing as fast as you.
It shouldn't take that long to sign Dennis Long.
Oh, yeah.
Just compare that to my name.
Still got another stamp there.
Call the other, it doesn't have to be that clear, because nobody really cares about what his name is, but mine. Card Leandro doesn't have to be that clear, 'cause nobody really cares what the name is, but mine is.
That's true.
Official record that some people wanna remember the year of the town when Dennis Long was elected.
Still can't even read it anyway.
That's true. If, uh, we've forgotten anybody, please let the Ray know. Mistakes do get made.
Okay, while we're waiting, we have an, the selectmen have an invitation to attend the Great East Lake Improvement Association meeting on July tenth at ten a.m. at Weeks Park. That's the Great East Lake Annual Meeting, July tenth.
Also, Ted, if you wanna speak, let them know I have a time. Or Tony's gonna take it.
Tony, I just gave it to you.
No, it's not.
It's my last meeting, I got ready to take my time.
Actually, trying to hurry up and get you out of here.
What'd you do, got a stamp?
No, I went to college. Does anybody have anything they would like to ask or make comment on? Yes.
Read something that I wrote back to me.
That's really mine, Tony.
This is, uh... Barbara Seega, this is for Dennis. Thank you for trying to be one of our selectmen. Last week I planned on saying something, but why pour salt in a wound? But after listening to you for twenty minutes or more about all the things people have done wrong to you, I decided that I couldn't let it go. You commented on me saying something about tapping your pen, but you left off the part that said you were facing the voting booth and not paying attention to whoever was speaking at the time. On several occasions, you mentioned people, not by name, but by office or position. It was clear who you were talking of. It would be against Ted's ethics to remove a sign. As a matter of fact, he was called out to Seventh Street by someone who said his signs were gone. When he got there, he saw your sign in the woods. He picked it up and placed it back at the edge of the street. I do not know what the issue was between you and Holly Mooney that caused Tony to cancel the selectmen's meeting on June tenth. Joan Nass queried about it after town meeting. I was in the process of telling her exactly that. You rudely interrupted my conversation with, uh, to introduce Marion and I to your wife and son in a crude manner. You stated that Marion and I were responsible for making your life miserable for the last three months and the cause of you losing the bid for reelection. I'm sorry you feel that way, but in reality, I wish we had that kind of power. There are a lot of things that I'd like to change in this world. If you remember when you took office, Dennis, I stopped by and commented how I was impressed by what you were doing. And if you did a good job and continued to do it, you'd have all my praises. Unfortunately, you changed. Good luck to you and your future endeavors. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak or ask any questions? Yes, sir.
I'd just like to make a request that something get changed at town meeting. And I don't know how to go about it. Uh, my name's Bill Gannon, Thirteenth Street. When we have the elections for the different people like Warrant and Finance, there's many of the people that aren't well-known in the town. And I wish there was a way that they, everybody could get up and speak for maybe two or three minutes of why they felt they should be elected to the office, rather than just read the names, put them on a bulletin board and nobody gets to say why they think they should be in the office. I think they should be allowed to speak so that everybody gets to hear what their thoughts are. And if it could be incorporated in some way, I don't know how to go about it, that was just my suggestion.
I'd say simply, yes, the moderator, ahead of time, if he would, uh, allow the people and invite them in to just speak for a limited time.
Right, if it was just a couple of minutes apiece and it was just put out at the beginning and everybody could do that?
Moderator operates the town meeting by the moderator's main stake moderator's manual. And he can do this.
Okay, well, the people that would run might not know that.
Yep.
So that's where I think might be just a regular procedure for him to announce that it's available for a couple of minutes. I don't think anybody would have a long speech or anything. But I think it would help a lot that the people got to know who's running.
Well, that's the other thing, you know, he asks them to stand up, but those of us down front can't see who's standing up.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Kyle Hodgson, uh, since this is your last night dinner, I would like to take the opportunity to thank you for your contributions to the Warrant and Finance as well as to the Road Committee. But most of all, I wanna thank you for trying to promote accountability in each and every one of the departments of this community. There's never been accountability and the results of this past election show exactly how the different departments feel about having, to have accountability. And it will be very interesting to watch the upcoming year, to see what happens to all your efforts.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks again, Dennis.
Any other comment or question? Is there a comment?
Yes, uh, this is just informational to the citizens of the town that, uh, I believe, um, a conversation with Mr. Winchell today, that, um, correct me if I'm wrong, that San Pedro Road Construction will start the first week in July?
Second.
The second week in July.
As long as the machine don't break down.
Okay, so that, uh... So hopefully people have patience with the road crew. Uh, they have to wait, uh, for them to get out of the way or whatever, uh, on that road, so, um... Other than that, I would like to, uh, thank my supporters over the last year and, uh, the ones that, uh, weren't my supporters, uh, this is what democracy's all about and, uh... I'll accept it accordingly.
Good working with you.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second that, all in favor?